There are more than 1 million people living in Montgomery County and it's estimated one-fourth of those residents are under the age of 18. When it comes to making decisions that affect the lives of those residents, the familiar way is adults talking to other adults. For years, the Montgomery County Council has taken its show on the road to hear the concerns of citizens in town hall style meetings. But in this town hall meeting, council members are poised to hear from the youth of our county and what concerns them the most. The council has many important decisions it will be making in the coming months, many of which will have a direct impact on people 18 and under. From recreation to libraries to parks, the council is going beyond the classroom to find out what quality of life issues are on the minds of the younger generation. Welcome to our county council town hall meeting and tonight we are featuring Montgomery County youth as part of this town hall meeting. This has become an annual event for the council and I think it's safe to say that is probably the council members' most favorite town meeting that we conduct. So I'm going to turn it over to Council President Hans Reimer for some opening remarks before we go to our students for their questions.
Good evening, everyone. Really glad you're here. I'm Hans Reimer and I'm serving as president of the Montgomery County Council. As I think you know, there are nine of us and I am one of the four council members who serves in the at-large districts representing the entire county. I live in Tacoma Park. I've got two boys in the school system and I am really glad that you are here, that you took time from your evening to come and experience the county council. It's a memory that I think will stick with you. I certainly, to this day, remember the time that I spent in the local government council when I was your age or perhaps younger. I want to thank you because you may not realize it, but young people, your generation is leading in this country and you have caught the attention of this country and the world with your organizing for gun safety, with your perspective on culture and respecting differences and your, the way that you model the country that we aspire to be. And we salute you, we thank you. Maybe that sounds corny, but it's sincere. So tonight, we are going to give you a chance to share, bless you, to share with us questions you may have, comments you may wish to make. So for those of you with questions or issues for discussion, we ask that you raise your hand to be recognized. You can also engage with us on social media using the hashtag #moco youth and you can follow the council on Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, and Facebook. In addition to airing live on county cable Montgomery, tonight's meeting is also being streamed on Facebook Live and I believe the video will be available on the council website and you can go back and watch it and if you ask a question, you can snip out that video segment and add that to your digital college applications. Now I'm asking each of my colleagues to introduce themselves and then we'll turn it back to Susan Kennedy, who is our moderator for tonight's discussion and I'll start with council member Craig Rice.
Thank you very much, Council President. My name is Craig Rice. I am a Montgomery County Council member representing District 2, which starts with Montgomery Village in North Potomac, Darnstown, goes all the way up to the Frederick County line, including places like Germantown, Clarksburg, Boyd's, Damascus, Hyattstown. I chair the Education Committee. I have two girls that are in Montgomery County Public Schools, one at King's You Middle and one at Northwest High School. And let's see here, I like long walks, no, I'm just kidding. I think that's about it. But I also serve on the Health and Human Services Committee and am very happy to see so many faces here from our youth population here in Montgomery County.
Good evening to you. I'm Roger Berliner and I've had the privilege for the last 12 years of representing District 1, which is the western part of the county, from the DC line all the way up to the Frederick County line. I serve as Chair of our Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy, and Environment Committee. Now that's a mouthful. And I also have had the privilege of serving on the Health and Human Services Committee under Chairman Leventhal.
I'm George Leventhal. I'm coming to the end of 16 years on the county council, which I realize is longer than some of you have been alive. And I represent everyone in Montgomery County and it's been a great joy and I look forward to hearing from all of you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name is Sidney Katz. I serve on the Public Safety Committee and the Government Operations Committee. Councilmember, Vice President Navarro is actually the Chair of the Government Operations. I grew up in Montgomery County. I went to Montgomery County Public Schools. I graduated Gaithersburg High School. I went to Montgomery College. I graduated from the University of Maryland. And for many years, I was on the City Council of Gaithersburg for 20 years and I was Mayor of Gaithersburg for 16. And I truly look forward to working with each one of you and look forward to all of your, all of your good questions. Thank you again.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Navarro and I am the Vice President of the Montgomery County Council. I also represent District 4, which is the mid-part of the county, includes places like Wheaton, Aspen Hill, Sandy Spring, Alney, Colesville, and many other great areas. I've been on the county council since 2009. Before that, I served on the Board of Education. I also chaired the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee. I serve on the Education Committee. I have two daughters that graduated from Montgomery County Public Schools, who are now young adults. One of them is going to graduate next May from Howard University. And I have the privilege and honor of being the first Latina ever elected to the Montgomery County Council. It is so good to see you here tonight.
Very good. Those are our introductions and Susan, let's get started.
Okay, well, we're going to start tonight's meeting with the newest student member to the Montgomery County School Board. So she's going to introduce herself and start off with the first question.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Ananya Tadakonda. I'm the student member on the Montgomery County Board of Education. I'm currently a senior at Richard Montgomery High School and I have the privilege and the honor to represent the 163,000 students we have in our public school system. So on behalf of all of those students, I'd like to thank you all for hosting this event tonight. Like President Reimer said, our youth are ever more civically engaged as the days pass by and I'm so grateful to be part of a generation that is so civically engaged and so passionate about a host of different issues. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the students who participated in the council member for a day, many of them of whom raised the topic of mental health. This month is actually MCPS Mental Health and Awareness Month, so I felt that that was very relevant for the time we are in right now. So the question that I'd like to bring to you today, on behalf of our students, education is a critical component to build the leaders of tomorrow. Education is often referred to as the great equalizer. So I guess what I'd like to ask you today is, to what extent do you anticipate funding the fiscal year 20, MCPS operating budget? Thank you.
All right. I will make a quick comment and then I'm going to pass it to the Chair of the Committee for Education, Craig Rice. And I'll just note, many of you will likely answer, ask education questions and I'm not going to let Craig answer every single one because then none of us will get a chance, but I will pass it over with just the comment that in this current year's operating budget, the council funded 100% of the requests from the school system and that's not the first year. There's been other recent years when we've been able to do that as well and we're very proud of that. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, you know, and one of the things, Ananya, and what a great introduction too. We have always valued the importance of education here in Montgomery County. For the past three years, we have fully funded the MCPS Board of Education request for their education budget. And I, my conversations with Dr. Jack Smith, your superintendent, I feel as though we are on the same page when it comes to this upcoming year, understanding that unfortunately we are facing some challenging fiscal times and there will be some challenges ahead when it comes to us being able to afford everything we can. But I can assure you that we remain committed to making sure that education is a top priority here in Montgomery County for many years to come, not just next year.
We've got a couple of young folks here who would like to have a word. Come on out and tell us your name and what school you go to.
Your ex and I go to Sligo Middle School.
Okay, what would you like to ask?
Can you like improve like the teachers, like saying a kid gets bullied and the teachers see it and they don't do anything? Like can you like improve something that makes the teachers like, I don't know how to explain it, but like to make them like...
Pay attention?
Yeah.
Pay attention more to when you guys are bullied? You'd like to see them maybe engage in the situation or maybe take it to a higher level?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're being, you're seeing bullying at your school and nobody's really doing anything about it?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that question. I think that number one, you know, what we can do is communicate this particular issue to our colleagues at the Board of Education, who are the ones who run the schools and who create policies. I know that they have policies in place that address issues of bullying, but it's a very large school system and so it's so important to get that feedback, specific feedback from our students and parents. The first line of action always is to talk to an adult, to talk to the principal if the teacher's not responding and to bring that up even further. But what I can tell you is that we will definitely make sure that we communicate that to our colleagues so they can play, pay closer attention to the specific school at Sligo Middle School.
Thank you, Council Vice President Navarro. And before I turn it to Council Member Katz, our council's lead for mental health, our staff has made some additional seating available, so I'll encourage you to squeeze in and there's some vacant seats. I see a lot of our participants here on the side and we'd like to really encourage you to come in and get comfortable. Mr. Katz?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention in addition to what Council Member Navarro said about bullying. I think it was either last year or the year before, for this very youth town hall meeting when we had it, we had a young lady that stood up and complained about bullying and how she had been bullied. And I can tell you, at the end of what she had to say, the entire crowd applauded her for what she had been through and that we were all going to work together to make certain that it does not happen again to her or anyone else. And I ask you all to applaud everybody. Bullying is never acceptable. I don't care what the situation is. It is never acceptable. And I believe what we need to do is to work together as a community and we are one community, regardless of what school we go to, we're all one community going to Montgomery County Public Schools and we need to work together to make certain that bullying is never applauded, is never appreciated and we need to applaud this young lady and tell her that she never has to go through this again. Please join me in applause.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Mental health is such an important issue. Mr. Berliner?
So I just want you guys to know that last year when we had this conversation and a woman came up and shared her experience, I picked up the phone, I sent letters, I talked to our Board of Education about it and made sure that it was attended to. If any of you are feeling those kinds of issues and haven't felt that they have been addressed, come talk to us afterwards. Let us know. Let us be your advocate if for whatever reason it hasn't felt safe before. Feel safe now.
I have great respect for my colleague, Mr. Berliner, and I appreciate that he conveyed the message. I would suggest that you speak, if the teachers are not paying attention, you speak to the principal and the principal could likely do more about it than a county council member could. So we support you and we're in solidarity with you, but the principal is really the most effective person in that setting to speak to.
All right.
Hi, I'm Joshua Perez. I go to Winston Churchill High School and I'm a senior. I've had the privilege of going to John F. Kennedy High School for the first two years of my high school career and my question was, how do you, what are your views on the clear differences between the down county schools and the up county schools? Because there's a lot of different atmosphere when I go to Churchill and I get a bunch of scholarship emails or I get a bunch of help. But when I went to Kennedy and my sister, who's a senior there now, she gets no help. So I want to know what you plan to fix for that.
That's a great question. Thank you. You've put your finger right on the big challenge. I think, I think some of our other participants here might agree. We understand that kids come into the schools with different resources from home and that often different communities in the county are able to bring more resources into their It's our policy that the school itself should not have those kinds of differences and if that is something that you identify, then that's a problem that we need to address. But one of the ways we have worked to try to close that gap in resources that are available to kids are by supporting programs like College Bound and College Tracks and others. There are a number of really fantastic programs. I don't know if there's one at Kennedy, I thought there was, that helps students identify scholarships and provides them with resources on their journey to college. And so it's our goal that every, every student has access to the resources that they need to gain access to college, to gain scholarships. And if you're experiencing something different than what we want, then thank you for letting us know that we need to work on that more. I'll invite my colleagues if they wanted to comment.
Sure, Kennedy High School is in my district and this continues to be a challenge, I think, in Montgomery County. Just today, interestingly enough, on WAMU, there was a show dedicated to equity in the schools. There is a particular series right now airing and stars called "America to Me" and it's exploring all these issues nationally. So what I can tell you is that this is definitely a very critical and top, at least, of my priority agenda, starting this next term. I think the Board of Education has done a lot to address this issue of inequities and disparities in our school system, but it's something that we really do need to solve because not only is it not fair to have these, you know, differences in resources, but it really is a matter of economic development for us. We need to make sure that all our students are receiving the support they need so they can do very well so that Montgomery County can continue to be a very vibrant county vis a vis their economy. And so we're looking at it from different lenses, right? Not just around equity, not just around, you know, the academic achievement gap, but also as an economic imperative. And so I invite you to stay tuned. We're going to be working very hard next year on an equity policy so that we can have structural fixes, not just, you know, an initiative here and an initiative there, but structural fixes to get this going in the right direction. So just know that it is a priority for us and that we'll continue to work. And after this, give me your name and I'll make sure to add you to the list as we continue to, to address this issue structurally and check out that show, "America to Me." I think it's very powerful.
Thank you for raising your voice.
Hi, my name is Lauren. I go to Sherwood. I'm a senior. You guys have organized this town hall, obviously, to hear from students, but another way that you can hear from students, this is before I ask my question, I just want to let you know. I wrote, I write for the school newspaper, The Warrior. We have an online website where you can access any of our articles. A lot of our students, they write about issues they're passionate about in our To the Point editorial section under Opinions. So if you want to look that up, our website is thewarrioronline.org. So one issue that a student wrote a nice op-ed about was the discrepancy between honors and AP classes in preparing you for college. Honors classes simply don't prepare you for AP classes. Like the new curriculum for honors chemistry, even our AP chemistry teacher from last year, he said that there was really no reason to take honors chem before taking AP anymore because it just didn't prepare you. So I worry about those students who never get to AP, how they're going to fare in college. So how can we address that?
Mr. Rice?
So, yeah, you're absolutely correct and it was, it wasn't until I actually went with my daughter to North Carolina State to tour and heard the admissions counselor say, "You can take as many honors classes as you want, but we don't care." And it really is one in which there is certainly a movement towards focused on AP classes only. I serve on the Kerwin Commission, which is a brand-new commission, well, not brand-new now, it's been for two years, at the state level that's looking at revamping education throughout the state of Maryland. And one of the things that we're looking at is revamping the MSD requirements, our Maryland State Department of Education requirements, when it comes to what our advanced placement classes would look like and really honing in on AP only and getting away from honors classes. It's a decision that's made by our school board and by our Maryland State Department of Education, but that is headed in that direction because of where our colleges are going with their view of honors versus AP classes. So you couldn't be more correct.
So, follow-up to that. How are you going to change the lower curriculums, like grade level and honors classes in like middle schools to prepare students to take AP classes? Because many of the reasons students don't take them is because they don't feel prepared from those other classes. Like I'm in AP Lit right now.
Okay.
And we're reading Shakespeare poems, right? And there are multiple choice practices and throughout the country, people don't do very well on those. To get a passing score on the exam, you have to answer like 60% of the questions right.
Yeah, may I interject if I could? Thank you for raising this. One of the challenges is we, we don't get into classes and curriculums at the county council, that's the Board of Education. So I want to invite you to continue, but I just, for those of you who are going to be asking questions, please understand that our jurisdiction is over the high-level funding and, you know, we, we don't have the purview to make decisions about or hold schools accountable for things that are happening, like literally in your classroom or that kind of thing. So we want to hear about it. If you've got an experience you need to share, tell us, because we, we need to have your perspective, we need to understand your perspective on the schools, but just please be understanding that there's some ways in which we, we're, it's not our role to think about specific changes like one type of class versus another.
And let me just say, I completely hear and understand what you're saying. It's a complete revamping of our entire curriculum from 9 to 12. And so from that perspective, we're going to align those things to ensure, and this is my conversation outside of council. This is my role on the Kerwin Commission and some of the conversations we've had, just like Council Member Reimer said, this is more MSD, working with our Maryland Association of Boards of Education to come up with a new structure. So that's coming and we can provide you with more information. If you give me your information, I can give you a robust list of all the things that are going on that we're recommending, that you can take a look at, that are going to address what you're talking about. Okay?
Thank you. So again, we ask for your perspectives on schools. We want to know what you think, how this county is doing, but just understand, if you're asking us a question about a very specific issue in class or at school, that may be best addressed to the BOE, Board of Education. By the way, if there are any reporters here for many of the school papers, I invite you to contact your, any council member, anytime. I get a question about every week from a reporter at a school paper and I always respond. So other council members will do the same. Susan?
I see lots of hands up, guys. I see you. I'm coming back over that way in just a minute, so be patient. Thanks.
My name is Donggo Kaka. I came, I came from Springbrook High School and in my school, many students prevent themselves from participating in a protest or walkout because they're told that they'll be marked absent if they participate in the walkout. My question is, how will the members of Montgomery County Council encourage students to protest for their rights or exercise their freedom of speech?
That is a fantastic question. That is a challenging issue that I think a lot of us have grappled with. I would encourage you to use your voice, I really would. There are moments when I think you have to speak out, but I would ask you to talk to your parents. There's no reason why you would ever need to take an action that you aren't capable, you know, you aren't able to talk about with your parents. And if you make a, a good case to your parents that this country needs you, that you're, that you're part of a group of people who needs your presence, I would expect that many of your parents would support you and they would get you justification for an excused absence. So talk to your parents. You know, your parents are your friends here and they're your supporters. And I think that as long as you're able to ask that question of your parents, that the school's policy should not be a barrier to your participation.
Hello, my name is Levi Okunizir. I go to Roberto Clemente Middle School. I'm from 7th grade. Thank you for your support of Excel Beyond the Bell program. I attend the Excel Beyond the Bell program every day. In my school, there's a lot of fighting and bullying and a lot of racist comments and threats. What can you do about the fighting and bullying in Montgomery County schools?
So a lot of these are things while, again, they are under the purview of your principal, under the purview of the Board of Education, we can have conversations about what we're hearing. You have your Montgomery County Public Schools student member of the board that's here, who I know is taking notes as well. And so, Ananya, I know is writing down all of this information also, because these are things that are going to be addressed. I would encourage you, and we've heard this before, make sure that you're a voice in your school first. And whoever that first person you go to, if they're not listening, then go to the next person who's in charge beyond them, whether it's an assistant principal or a principal. And also talk to your parents, because your parents are advocates, our PTAs that are in the school are advocates as well. No student should have to adhere to bullying. We have a very strong state law, I know because I wrote it, dealing with the prohibition of bullying in Maryland schools as a whole. And so no student should have to tolerate that. That's our policy, that's our state law. And so from that perspective, if somebody is violating that, you need to make sure that folks, grownups that are in charge of the building, are holding folks accountable for that. Okay?
Okay, I'm going to pass it to my colleagues, but there's room up here on the floor. There's plenty of room. If you want to come up here and sit in front of this table on the floor, there is plenty of room. Council Vice President Navarro?
Thank you so much for bringing that issue up. It's good to know that Excel Beyond the Bell is, is working and is making a difference. That is an after-school program and that is something that we need to hear, because when it comes time for a budget, then we can add more money to have more programs like that. So first of all, thank you for telling us that. Second, it is important to remember that you do have your teacher, you do have your PTA person, you do have your principal, you do have Board of Education, but you also have us as your representatives. So make sure that you let your parents know that each, each council member, there are five that represent different districts and there are four that represent everybody. And if you go on the website, you can find out according to where you live, who is your representative, and you can let us know also. And we will bring that issue up and try to address it. Because like I said before, it's a very large school system and even though we have policies, sometimes things don't quite work out the way they should. But nobody, no one has to be subjected to any kind of insult or racial slur or anything of that kind. There is zero tolerance for that. So thank you again. It's very brave of you to ask that question.
Hi, my name... Did we have one more? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to interject that, you know, and I certainly agree with everything that's been, been said, but when I gave the introduction for myself, I don't know that I mentioned that I represent District 3, which is Rockville and Gaithersburg and, and all the way down to Leisure World. And I also didn't mention that I had two, have two daughters that attended Montgomery County Public Schools and my wife actually retired in, from Montgomery County Public Schools after 40 years of service. 20 years of those was being a pupil personnel worker. And I encourage everyone, believe me, I heard it every day for 20 years. I encourage anyone that has a problem in, whether it's with bullying or, or someone that's being in some way threatened or whatever it is, the school system, the Board of Education and every person that works for the Board of Education wants to hear about it, wants to know about it, so that they can solve the problem. They don't want anyone to feel unsafe and I can tell you, they will work on it so that you won't be. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maddie Graham. I'm a sophomore at Blair High School and I would like to raise the issue of climate change. It's an issue of our generation's future and recent reports show that our future is beyond threatened by climate change and yet people remain apathetic towards it, they don't care. And I would like to ask what your plans are both for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and for reducing general apathy towards this issue, which is really just endangering our entire generation.
Mr. Berliner?
Very good.
Thank you. I have had the privilege of chairing our Environment Committee on the council. And let me tell you, if there's one area, and there are many, that you should feel proud of, it is the work of our county when it comes to climate change. We are the first county in the country to declare it an emergency. Okay? It is so bad, it is so off the charts, it is happening so quickly, that you are absolutely right to focus on it, it is an emergency. Our county, as a county government, is carbon-neutral. Okay? We buy only renewable power for the entire county. And so, we have done a lot in our county, and we have set the goal of eliminating carbon emissions in the county as a whole by 2035. Okay? So, we just had a briefing the other, two days ago, on this very topic, from the leaders of our county administration, all of whom are deeply committed to this work, but do know, it will require people like you, all of you here. You are the future, you're the ones that are going to have to carry this banner of saying how terribly important it is to help change the culture, to have the conversation with your parents, to make sure that they appreciate just how critical this issue is. But this is an area you should feel proud of, the work of your county government.
And if I could just add on that, just today, Montgomery County actually cut the ribbon on a microgrid for the public safety building with the police headquarters, and it also will be a microgrid for the jail in Clarksville.
Good evening, my name is Naomi Tiawu. I attend Roberto Clemente Middle School, and I'm in 6th grade. First, I want to thank all of the county members for supporting the Excel Beyond the Bell program. I would like to address the effect of bullying on the victims. One of the points is that their self-esteem is dropping. This can lead to suicidal thought, depression, isolation from others, a decrease in grades, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to know how we as a community can support these victims and get rid of bullying as a whole.
So I do want to address one of the things that I've been talking with, and I serve on the Health and Human Services Committee in addition to chairing the Education Committee. Dr. Raymond Crowell, who's actually the head of our Behavioral Health in our Department of Health and Human Services, is working with Dr. Jack Smith, your superintendent, on a proposal designed to make sure that we have mental health triage at every single one of our schools in Montgomery County. We really want to make sure, and we understand, the impacts of bullying and tormenting our students. We really want to make sure that we're all coming together to provide support. So, while you've heard about some of the other aspects in terms of prevention of bullying, what we also need to do is make sure that it's whether people who are experiencing trauma in their neighborhoods, people who have escaped trauma in other countries and fled here to the United States and are still having a tough time adjusting, and, you know, still reliving some of those horrible times that they had in their other countries. All of those kinds of things are issues that are being dealt with in our schools. And so, having more trauma-informed folks that are in our schools, that are going to be able to help assist our students, is an ultimate priority. And so, hopefully, we'll see that proposal come about very soon, hopefully next year, as a part of the budget.
Mr. Leventhal.
You know, it occurs to me, we're getting so many questions about bullying, more than we've gotten in the past with this youth town hall. And I apologize, I hope no one will be offended by what I'm about to say. We have a bully in the White House, the most prominent national politician, the most significant leader in our country. Every single day, every single day, he is demonstrating behavior that we don't want our children to emulate. And I think it's, and I'm just wondering if there's some correlation here between the rise in incidence of bullying and the validation that the bullies get when they see, you know, when they read about a tweet, or they hear about a rally, or they hear about some, you know, speech given by the leader of our country encouraging violence and using bullying techniques. The hope that I have is that this experience, where our politics has been degraded by really base and profane language and behavior, will, I hope, inspire better behavior from all of us. We don't really necessarily know what we want to be when we grow up, but we know what we don't want to be, is the example that we're seeing every day from the White House. I hope that that's the effect. So, all of this talk about bullying is making me wonder whether we're getting a bad example at the very top, and we've all got to redouble our efforts to show our shared values of tolerance and appreciation for each other, and respecting each other's dignity, and rejecting the bad example that we're getting every day from the president.
Thank you, George.
Hi, I'm Matthew Lyons-Bennington. I go to Julius West Middle School, I'm in 6th grade. I would like to raise the issue of my former school, Twomborak Elementary, on its low-budget and how most of its equipment was either defective or didn't work.
Okay, well, we, I mean, we provide as much funding as we can to the school board, and they allocate it to the schools. If there is a situation in your school that you feel is inadequate, you should raise that with your parents, and they should talk to the principal, and the principal should ask for more resources from the school system. And sometimes, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. You've got to participate in a process in order to get the outcome that you're seeking. So, if you feel that there's something in your school today, in the future, or as in your case, in your recent past, you've got to raise that issue so that others can be aware, and we'll try to address it. Thank you very much. All right?
Okay, I'm going to come right here.
We're going to try to answer questions as quickly as we can, so we can get to all of you.
Yeah, there's a lot of hands up tonight. Okay, young lady, tell us who you are and where you go to school.
My name is Anika Arjumand. I am from Roberto Clemente Middle School, and I'm in 7th grade. I would just first like to thank you all for your efforts in making Montgomery County Public Schools the best possible atmosphere for its students. I would like to address the issue that has been really bothering me. In my school, I've noticed cliques of many kinds of social groups, and a great example of this is LGBTQ community. They have been facing many judgmental situations where people are saying nasty comments, or saying stuff that isn't right, because they're all humans. No one is, no one should be discriminated in this possible way. So, how can we remove such social barriers and make our community and our school a positive atmosphere for all our students, so we can all enjoy ourselves and learn everyone, learn what people are doing, get, become friends, and not go through such stress and trauma?
Thank you. Great question. You know, I think that, first of all, appreciate your speaking out on behalf of any group that is experiencing marginalization or exclusion. And I think we are all, we all have the opportunity to be leaders in our own personal lives, to reach out, to make friends, and to include others, never to exclude. I heard today someone say, a community that excludes anyone, one person, is not a true community. So, let's all take on that mantle of leadership ourselves, and if you see or experience social exclusion, raise that issue with teachers, with administrators, and try to address it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Orlando Guevara, and I go to John F. Kennedy High School. I'd like to thank the Rec Zone for providing the after-school program that I stay at. Well, my main concern is our safety with transportation. As you heard on the news, one of our fellow students was in the accident, and it's very hurtful to see. But I'd like to, like, bring to your attention how a lot of our bus stops are on busy roads. And we want to ensure that we can get to school safe and without having to worry for our lives, as we see, you know, we're in the open, like, with the cars, you know, in front of us. Like, we want to be sure that, like, you know, the same thing will happen to us as it happened to our friend.
Thank you, young man, you've got a lot of heart. Appreciate your speaking out. This is an issue that is on all of our minds. I'm going to ask Nancy Navarro to respond, as she recently orchestrated a letter that went to the state in order to work with them to get this addressed.
Thank you for bringing this issue. Our heart really ache, all of our hearts ache for what happened to your fellow student. And we immediately wrote, all nine members wrote, a letter to our governor, because this particular accident occurred in a state road. There is no doubt that we need to engage also our school system, which we are going to host a meeting with them as well, because it is true that there's been a lot of growth in certain areas of our county, and so, to have bus stops in areas that are so busy, and, believe you me, I drive through that area every single morning, and I always notice a lot of students standing on the sidewalk on Georgia Avenue waiting for the bus. And so, even though this was a very horrible freak accident, we need to do whatever we can to address any potential danger to our students. So, we are hosting a meeting, and we've written a letter, because we need to also look at reducing speeds in certain areas of our county. We need to look at enhancing our crosswalks, and most certainly, where are these bus stops for our students located? So, just to let you know, I wish I could just jump over there and give you a hug, I'll give you a hug after this, but our heart really does go out to our students who are just there, waiting for the bus, like, every single day. But we're working on this, and we are going to stay on it until we can address some of these issues. In addition, we also are following something called Vision Zero, which is a comprehensive plan to reduce pedestrian fatalities throughout the county. And so, we're looking at this comprehensively, but really, really upset that this actually occurred. And again, our hearts go out to the student, especially the one that is still very much trying to recover from the injuries.
Thank you. We're working on it, we are on the case, and we're going to do our best. Susan.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm just going to pray that you can.
We can hear you. But if you want to make sure we hear you, talk closer to the microphone.
Oh yeah, I'm Alan Kim, and I go to Blake High School, you know, yeah. All right, anyways, I don't like how spring break is super short, you know, I'm trying to like, I'm trying to go to the beach, you know, but like, they're like five days, what is that? Anyways, you know, I've never been on TV before, so my legs are shaking. But, um, yeah, so like, you know, can you try to make spring break longer?
So, let me just tell you one thing, and again, this isn't, this isn't political, this is reality. The governor's the one who actually made a decision that changed not only your spring break, but all of your holidays. It really threw the Board of Education's calendar into a loop. He did that so that, he assumed that it would guarantee they would sell more funnel cakes and boardwalk fries at the boardwalk in Ocean City. The reality is, is that decisions like this should be left up to the school board. The governor took that away from our school board, and we need to ensure that those in Annapolis leave those decisions up to local school boards to make that decision. So, that is one where I'm going to blame the person who solely is in the crosshairs, and that is Governor Larry Hogan. Next question.
Okay, well, we are about halfway through this town hall meeting. We're going to take a very quick break, but stay seated, don't get up, we'll be right back with more of our youth town hall meeting from Rockville, Maryland. Stay with us.
Don't look at me, your hair's been frizzy today. Aww, you should pick that up.
It's only a minute, don't go anywhere, no time for the bathroom or anything, guys, this is super quick.
Every day, kids witness bullying.
Oh, look, your crush is looking at you. Poor you.
They want to help, but don't know how.
See, no one here is going to help you, because no one likes you.
Teach your kids how to be more than a bystander. Visit StopBullying.gov.
I see it, I see it.
There are some moments only the forest can inspire. Find yours at DiscoverTheForest.org.
Everybody has a dream.
Mine was to see the ocean. And with a little help, I made it.
Welcome back to our county council youth town hall meeting. We are here in Rockville, Maryland, in the council hearing room. We've got loads of kids here with their hands up with lots of great questions. We're getting right back to the floor with this young lady here, who's been waiting very patiently.
My name is Adrianne Wood, I come from Roberto Clemente, I'm in the 6th grade, and I really appreciate that the council supports EBB. I have a few questions. The first one is, how can we, how can we make more programs that are like EBB, that promote character building, so kids can be respectful to kids as well as they're respectful to adults?
That is a fantastic question. First of all, raise your hand if you're here with EBB. Awesome, all right.
You did some work.
Very good. We love EBB, and the county council has been working with the executive to expand that program. And we have added new schools to the EBB program every year for the last several years. And we're going to keep adding schools to EBB as long as we're breathing. So, we're going to keep going until we get to everybody.
Okay, here we go.
EBB is Excel Beyond the Bell, if you don't know that, it's a rec department-run program for kids, after-school program, and it's got lots of fun opportunities, as well as academic enrichment. And Gabe Albernose is our Department of Recreation Director, and he oversees that program. And the good news is, he's going to be, well, he's up for election to be a council member, and I shouldn't have said that. So, anyway, he's a fantastic guy, and if he is a council member, he'll work with us to keep expanding EBB.
My name is Frederick Haller, I attend Roberto Clemente Middle School. Thank you for supporting the Excel Beyond the Bell program. I attend the EBB program each day, and it keeps me away from bad stuff, such as drugs and gangs. It would be great if other schools could have EBB. Also, there has been an increase in gang-related activity at our school. What can you do about this?
And you're at which school?
Roberto Clemente.
Yes, Roberto Clemente. Yes, I know it well, I live in Germantown. Let me say this, when it comes to gang activity, we actually have a great organization called our Street Outreach Network, headed up by Luis Cardona, which does a phenomenal job. They're working in partnership with our police department to make sure that we're not just locking kids up who make bad decisions. They're not bad kids, they're just making bad decisions, but we want to make sure that they can make better decisions, like you're being taught in your Excel Beyond the Bell. And so, from that perspective, we have folks that are in the community, that are working with young people. Unfortunately, we just lost two young people in the course of 24 hours yesterday in Germantown. And so, the reality is, our work continues. We have a long way to go, but I will tell you this, and many of you who are here, who have advocated for getting guns off our streets, that's part of the problem. You can't shoot someone if you don't have a gun. No one should be having a gun in our community unless you're a police officer or someone who's a part of our military. I don't understand why it is that we have this obsession with firearms, because what happened to the young man who lost his life yesterday is that he was accidentally shot by his friend. This wasn't a drug deal. This was them playing around with a very dangerous weapon that can take someone's life in a heartbeat. I hope that each and every one of you imparts the danger of guns, and that we focus on getting them out of the hands of young people and off of our streets, because that's going to ultimately save lives.
Susan?
Hello, I'm Kevin Acapo, and I go to Rockville High School. And I had a question about voting... And I had a question about building renovations at MCPS schools. Around the summer, when the lead poisoning, the lead testing came out from the water in different schools, I saw how Poolsville had a really high number. And after doing a bit more research, I saw that they were taking off of being, getting renovations and stuff like that. And also at my school, we, a bunch of years ago, we had renovations, but they were kind of lazily done with a lot of errors, and how a lot of them have been fixed, such as my school basement not being renovated into like a theater workshop place. And I was wondering if there's anything you can do to somehow speed up the processes and possibly getting Poolsville back on the list for renovations.
So there's discussion underway right now at the school board, and I hope Anaya will be part of this conversation, to request that filtered water bottle fillers will be installed in 100% of schools to address this issue of lead in the drinking water. So it may come before us, before the end of this county council. I'm hoping that it will, but the school board needs to send it to us. I can tell you, given the cost estimates that I've seen, I think it's reasonable, and I think the county council would support it, but we need to get a request from the school system to put safe drinking water, water bottle filling taps with filters to keep the lead out in every school. So each of you can make that request to your student member of the board who's here, and to other school board members. We're eager to get that request from the school board.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name's Ashna Singh. I'm a sophomore at Woden High School. So recently, there's been a lot of emphasis on October being the Mental Health Awareness Month, but in my school especially, it's hard to see the application of that. Many students are feeling the pressure of school right now, and with school start times and especially a large workload, the wellness tips being provided aren't actively relieving stress for students. Is there anything that the council can do in terms of programs being funded to take this immense toll off of students?
I have a tendency, when I'm talking to constituents, to say, we have a program for that for almost everything, and programs themselves don't necessarily do the trick, because individuals need to have the awareness of what's going on with themselves, and they need to be willing to ask for help. The biggest obstacle in terms of students getting help with mental health issues is stigma and shame. And the difference between a disease of the brain and a disease of the body really is no difference. You need to ask for help, you need to see someone who is able to treat you, you need to recognize that if you're feeling very low, that if you don't want to eat, and you don't want to participate in regular activities, and you can't sleep, and you're just feeling anxiety all the time, and you're feeling blue, that's not normal. You should ask for help. You should recognize that something's going on, and it's not your fault. We do have a program, you asked about are we funding programs, called Linkages to Learning, where in the school health centers, the school health personnel are trained to identify mental and behavioral health issues and to give referrals to young people who need more advanced treatment. So there is that program, but students themselves, you need to understand, if you're experiencing stress, if you're feeling depression, if you're feeling blue, ask for help. It isn't your fault. Help is available. Talk to your parents, talk to your school health nurse. We can get, we as a community can get help to you, but you need to recognize what's going on within yourself, and be supportive of your friends when they're having these kind of complaints, encourage them to get help. There's no shame, there's no stigma in a mental illness any more than there is in a physical illness. It's the same thing. You need to get help.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Nina Cordell, and I attend Julius West Middle School. I am in the sixth grade. And the question I have for you today is, what is the county doing to enhance school security to keep teachers and students safe?
I'm gonna try and be quick and then let, we have members of our Public Safety Committee. MCPS has started to harden all of our facilities throughout Montgomery County Public Schools. That means locking vestibules that are in the front, so you can't get into the school without being buzzed in. We're also enhancing cameras, and I say "we" because the MCPS Board of Education sent the request to Montgomery County Public Schools to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and there are additional requests that are on the table that are coming across for even more. We've enhanced school resource officers and added six additional school resource officers that will be devoted to middle schools. In addition, we already have school resource officers at every single high school in Montgomery County. And so we take school security very seriously, and we certainly are doing our part to ensure that all you have to focus on is learning, and we need to keep your environment safe.
I also want to add to that, we're gonna do everything we can to harden the buildings, in other words, make the building safe, but we need you to continue to do what you are doing, which is to press for common sense gun safety reforms. There is nothing that is going to work better than getting guns off the streets, out of people's hands, and that is ultimately the true solution.
Okay, before we go to this young man's question, we have a Twitter question that has come in, and I'm going to read it off the screen, and whoever up there at the dais can take it. So this comes to us, Moco Youth question via Twitter. What can you do to help with school safety? As students, we want to feel safe in our schools. Well, I guess that question was almost just answered, so any other, I think Councilmember Katz, were you going to speak to that last?
Yeah, I did want to mention that, you know, we mentioned the school resource officers and everyone else. It is extremely important that if you see something, you say something to the school resource officers. We have had, it could have been horrible tragedies not become tragedies, because students in Montgomery County went to their school resource officer and told them of something that they had seen. And they, they were, everything that they did, everything that they said was sincerely appreciated. The school took immediate action, saved other people's lives because of it, and it is extremely important. If you see someone who is doing something that is wrong, and in this case, they had actually seen someone with a weapon, they went and told immediately, and the school took care of it right then. It is important to report it when you see it.
All right, my name is Luke Garwood from Ridgefield Middle School, and I was wondering why Montgomery County doesn't have extra credit? And I was also wondering why we have like five assessments one day and then one the next day, and it's very unevenly placed with tests.
All right, that is truly a school board, you know, question, extra credit and things like that. So I like your question, but I think it's best to pass that to the student board member. She's here, and she can, she can get back to you. I also want to just say, our colleague Mark Elrich has joined us, and Mark may answer a question in a moment as well.
Hi, my name is Haja Kamala. I'm a senior at John F. Kennedy High School, here with John F. Kennedy Rec Zone, and also a member of Montgomery County Regional Student Government, the Advocate Deputy for the Opportunity Gap. My question is, what strategies and budget-wise, what do you have in place to close the gap? I am aware that MCPS has tried and created plans for it, but what is the immediate effect that it has on us students? And I'm aware that there's tutoring and stuff, but not everyone can afford that.
So closing the opportunity gap is challenging. The long-term strategy, which I think everybody up here agrees on, is getting into early childhood development, so that when students enter school, the antaronal level playing field, because we know that if you're at grade level early, then you tend to stay at grade level, where the kids who enter school, you know, significantly behind have a difficult time making progress. But I think things like reducing class size in schools is important, making sure that you have adequate facilities, making sure that your, you know, student-teacher ratios are good. And I'm a big believer, I used to teach elementary school, and I'm a big believer in having enough aides in the classrooms, because they really do make the teacher's job, I think, not just easier, but more effective, because you have two adults in the room who can provide additional supports. We've tried to fund the school system. A couple of years ago, we gave them money where they had identified strategies they thought would address the achievement gap, and we provided funding for that.
You know, in addition to that, I feel like we have to focus, you know, what happens in the schools, and so for us, being able to continue to commit to the funding is really important, and also learning what the Board of Education wants to do with that funding, because it has to be invested very strategically, right? So it has to be invested in the classroom, teachers, you know, the teachers have to be trained. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that they can do. There's also what we can do outside the classroom, because the opportunity gap doesn't just show up at the classroom. So that's why for us, you know, working on this equity policy, looking at everything from access to healthcare, from transportation issues, access to affordable housing, you know, all of those things also play a role. And there is no doubt that one of the best things that we can do is work towards getting some kind of dedicated funding stream for early childhood education, because children are already showing up in kindergarten with an achievement gap. So if we could do something in those first five years and level the playing field, then that will help us further along. So this is something that we are really, truly looking at from all different angles, and we will continue to work very closely. We have to, because we know that the gap continues to exist. And again, as I said earlier, if we want our students to be the best they can be, we need them, because all of you are gonna be the workforce that we need to continue to make this county a strong county.
My name is Jaclyn. I'm from Blair, and I'm with the Rec Center. And I wanted to ask, what can Montgomery County do to help on documenting people that want to continue in college and don't have scholarships?
That is a fantastic question. We have already established that Montgomery County, Montgomery College will offer tuition at the in-county rate, even if you're, you don't have documentation. So in many communities, they, you know, you're not eligible for preferred scholarship rates or the lowest scholarship, lowest tuition rate, if you're not documented, but in Montgomery College, you are. And that will enable many students to get a couple of years of affordable education, and then hopefully, you know, find an opportunity at a school where they can continue that education. Okay? So...
So let's say they don't have DACA, they don't have residence, so most of them can't get scholarships or can't get into a college, and they want to continue, so like, what can they do?
Right. There's not, that's a challenging question.
Well, it is a challenging question, but I do think that the college, you know, makes efforts to raise funds for scholarships for students who, like you were just describing, may not be able to qualify for other kinds of scholarships. I know that, you know, there are other efforts throughout the year to raise money for scholarships as well. But it is a very important point, and I know that, you know, I'm taking notes to make sure that it's something that we can expand, because it is critical that not only students be able to access in-state tuition, but then actually be able to pay for it and actually have opportunities to continue on. But there are some efforts and some programs that raise money specifically for this population.
Let me just say that the truest catalyst for change is gonna be advocating at the federal level. That's where votes matter. That's where your advocacy and activism in the community is gonna matter most. Look, if you continue to elect people who don't care about people who are in our community just because they may not have documentation and don't realize that they're human beings and still a part of our community, then we'll continue to have the challenges that we do. So we need to make sure that you are the next generation. As the council president said, you need to be working together, all of you, to ensure that if we want to see a community that truly is a vibrant fabric of everyone, that we have to work together to make sure that these types of decisions that are made at the federal level that then restrict us from doing what we want to do, which is be true to every single person that's in our community, then we'll continue to have those challenges and try and create workarounds, when in reality, it should just be that everybody should have access to a quality education regardless of where they came from.
Lots of hands up, guys.
Okay, my name is Salipe, and I go to Gattiff High School, and I'm the president of Liberty Promise After-School Program. And today, we had a discussion of what we want for the school, and something that many of the students might be agree is that we want change in the food of the, of the school.
Food?
Yep.
Not good?
Not good.
Well, standard disclaimer, school food is under the ambit of the school board, and the school board needs to hear your concerns about the quality of school food. The quality of school food is improving. There's more salad bars in schools. There have been a number of efforts in the community and from citizens to try to impress upon the school board the importance of having both nutritious and appetizing food in the schools. There's a citizen organization called Real Food for Kids Montgomery, which young people and their parents are encouraged to participate in. It's just a nonprofit organization in the community that's doing exactly that, advocating for that nutritious and appetizing food. The school system makes a lot of its own food. It makes it at a central kitchen and then distributes it around the county, but it can be better. It tries to stay within a very narrow budget. It doesn't, you know, the, both the federal subsidy and the individual payments pay for the whole thing, the general school budget doesn't pay for school food. So it's within a narrow budget, but I'm in agreement with you. I've been an advocate for this for a long time, and I've tried to impress upon the school system the need for that, and made a previous superintendent permanently hate me, because I called him to a joint meeting that I held with Chairman Rice on this topic, and the former superintendent was so appalled that he would be called to account for the quality of school food. So I'm on your side on this. I've been an advocate for a long time, but you need to speak up yourself. And once again, I hate to embarrass her, but your student member of the board is right here. Make your case to her.
Okay, this young man right here. Come on out, sir. Tell us your name and where you go to school.
My name is Nathan McFarland, and I go to St. Elizabeth School. And I was wondering if you have any future plans for sport fields?
Oh, yeah. Well, athletic fields are a big part of athletic programs, and we want kids in this county to have access to really high-quality playing fields. I remember when I was young, when I would, I didn't, I didn't have access to really great fields very much. And when I played against a team where there was a great field, I always thought that other team must have had, you know, a secret advantage over me. They must be better than my team, because look at this great field they got. And we don't want you to feel that way. We want you to feel like you're champs, and you can do anything. So we've been doing a lot to invest in quality athletic fields. The Parks Department has initiated over the last several years what I think is really a national leading example of natural turf management, grass management. They're planting new varieties of grass, they're using new aeration techniques, and they're doing a lot to enhance the quality of natural grass fields. And we're also building in places where there's so many kids that need to use a field that there's just no way to support grass. The school system is building artificial turf fields as well, and you can see those in use even when it's raining, when it's storming, you know, regardless of the weather, they are in use. So we have a strong, aggressive program to support the athletics in this county, and we want to see kids succeed.
Thank you. Okay, this nice young lady here, come on out, sweetie, and tell us who you are.
Hello, I'm Camilla Venicio, and I go to Goshen Elementary School. And my question is about violence, because the other day, there was a fight in my school, and we're only in fifth grade, and it surprises me how people already fight, like, and this type of violence happens, and we're this young. So I just wanted to know what you guys can do to make sure violence doesn't happen as much.
Thank you for that question. You know, it's, it's, a lot of the work that we do is to try to help families, to help people with circumstances of their lives. We raise the minimum wage so that people who have families who work can make enough money, hopefully, to not have as much stress in their life, to not be so unhappy. We provide transportation, like bus service, so that people can have access to jobs. We provide health and human service programs. We do a lot to try to enable people to live better lives, and we hope that that translates into people who are happier, and maybe whose children feel more loved, and have better examples in their life, and less stress, and maybe less prone to violence. It is a very important issue, and we want every child to feel safe. Mr. Berliner.
So not too long ago, I served on the board of an organization called Search for Common Ground. And basically, what they said to the world is, conflict is normal. How you resolve conflict is what... How you resolve conflict is what we need to attend to. So trying to find ways in which people can be respectful of people's differences, learn that there are other ways to resolve differences because we will have differences always. And so it is trying to find these alternative mechanisms, these alternative ways in which you can sit down together with a mediator in between, creating a safe space to be heard because most of misunderstanding is that we don't really hear one another. So just a thought to share with you.
Hi, hello, my name is Batwa Nula. I'm from John F. Kennedy High School. I'm, I'm here with Teen Works. And I, I wanted to ask a question about the special ed community in Montgomery County. I've seen that between different schools, I've visited different schools like Northwood and Wheaton High School, and I see that the special ed community is kind of being left behind. They don't have enough funding and they don't have enough like materials to participate with what everybody else and everybody else is doing. They don't have enough like, they don't have access to the same like sports. They can't really participate. They don't, they can't really go to our games or like have fun with us, like, like homecoming games and stuff like that. They don't really, they're not really a part of the entire school community. I feel like what can you do to change that?
So let me just say that, uh, you're absolutely right. Our special education community has been woefully underfunded by the state. Montgomery County, uh, has put forth a tremendous amount of money, uh, to fund special education programs and unfortunately the state has been woefully short. Uh, it's one of the recommendations that via the Corwin Commission that I sit on, that we're actually going to change the weight, which means the, the ratio of the amount of money that the state gives to special education students. When the state, uh, there was a consultant who was doing an analysis of the amount of money that people spend on special education. When they looked at the amount of money that Montgomery County spends, uh, on special education, they were shocked and staggered by how much money we spend versus how little the state gives us when it comes to special education. So the challenge is we've tried to do everything to support all other kinds of programs. You've heard about Excel Beyond the Bell, after-school, uh, prevention programs, mental health and wellness, health in our schools, all these things, and also fund special education, which is incredibly expensive. The, the ratios for teachers to students are incredibly smaller, specialized instructional materials. So all of those kinds of things require additional dollars. It is my hope that with the recommendations that come from the Corwin Commission that will happen this December, that the Maryland General Assembly and whoever our next governor is, are going to act and support the Corwin Commission recommendations so that we can get additional money coming into Montgomery County public schools. A lot of it which will go to two underfunded, uh, communities, our English language learners and our special education community. So thank you very much for speaking up for them. It is incredibly important and you're absolutely right.
Thank you for modeling inclusion. That was a fantastic question.
I'm sure the council members have noticed, we have a lot of groups here in the audience who have come. We, we have the Teen Works where that young gentleman came from, the REC Department. We also have these young ladies from Community Bridges and we also have a Boy Scout troop. And I believe they're here working on their badge and maybe-
Probably more than one, I bet, yeah.
Yeah. Tell us a little bit about what the badge is and then go ahead and, um, tell us your question.
Well, we're working on citizenship in the community, I believe, and our communications merit badge by going to this meeting and taking notes on what you were doing. And my question for you is, you say that education is the great equalizer and you provide scholarships and such to college, but not many people can excel in some of those fields and low-income homes have trouble going to colleges even if there are some scholarships. Some people just have more trouble and maybe they're battling with trying to do a job at once with that. So why don't we have public colleges and not just public high schools?
All right.
That's a big question.
That, that is a really great question and you should start a movement. Um, you know, there, there was a time when Montgomery College was incredibly cheap and around the country there were free colleges in California, free colleges in New York. They were usually, you know, partially or largely state-funded. And as the state has backed away from funding education, you've, we've been left to either rely more on local government or more on tuition. And that's not a good thing. I will say that the state of Maryland, um, they have new legislation that, you know, focuses on lower-income folks. And if you take 12 credits, then I think it's, the state's going to cover the cost of tuition. The problem is for, you know, you mentioned people with either families or working. A lot of people can't do community college and take 12 credits because they have work, maybe they've got a kid. And, uh, I'm hopeful that, that we'll be able to convince the state legislature to actually lower the, the semester requirement to something like six credits so that we act, because what we really want to do is encourage you to get through college, you get this other education. If it takes you six credits a semester, it's better that you do that and stick at it than you not do it at all. But I, I think it's a great question and you're right. It's one of the great challenges for us to face. And know that it is also an issue at the state now. Elections do matter and we have people running for governor who have said they want to make community college free. So do know that there are choices that you and your parents make all the time with respect to the leaders of our local government, our state government and our federal government that do have a direct bearing on some of the issues that you're raising. And so get involved.
Hello, my name is Laura Campo and I'm from John F. Kennedy. I'm a senior. My concern is SAT prepping or ACT prepping can be very expensive. Um, I'm aware that the county has, um, is in the works of implementing SAT School Day where we don't have to wake up on a Saturday and pay for our own SAT. And that's great. It's great that we have that opportunity now and we have that access. But how can we, um, how can we take that opportunity and actually achieve at it when some students aren't exactly prepared to take the SAT? Although we have that, my, like, my, my point is we have that opportunity, but we're not ready for it. So my question is, is there any fundings or any, um, resources that you guys could provide to low-income families that really cannot afford the preparation that SAT requires?
So let me just share with you that there are a number of nonprofits that are in our community that do just that, whether it's via College Trax, College Bound, also our George P. Thomas. They have a special SAT and ACT prep program also. So there are a number of ones that are out there. If you contact anybody in your school, uh, your guidance counselor, uh, and ask them, they will be able to refer you to those programs that are out there. They're free, uh, and provide access for those who don't have the specific, um, uh, money to go to one of these other, you know, high-dollar SAT preps. But I will tell you that many of those who have availed themselves of those programs in our community have been able to do very well. Uh, and so they're great programs that are out there for them.
I would like to add something and it's for everybody. You know, a lot of these questions really have to do with money, of course, you know, the funding. And, uh, on March 15th is when we receive the requests from the executive, uh, and it's when we start working on our budget. And so we will have hearings and I hope that you will stay tuned either by, you know, following our Facebook page and the council, looking at, watch out for our website. And please come back and tell us because as we're working through the budget, it is important for us to remember a lot of these specifics that you're bringing up that are really important and make a difference to you. Um, so I will invite you, of course, to continue coming to the Youth Town Hall, stay connected in some way, but also watch out for our budget process and, and public hearings. Um, and come and share with us what is that is making a difference in your opinion and what should we do more or what, what is it that we should actually begin to do that we have not done already?
Good evening. My name is Kenna Gang. I attend Roberto Clemente Middle School and I'm in seventh grade. I would like to thank the county couns, counselors for the, for the effort to make the county a better place. And I would like to ask how you would enforce anti-bullying, anti-bullying? The policies aren't being put into effect and many parents don't know how their kids act at school or if they do, they don't really discipline their child, children or try to help. So how would you make sure that these policies encourage my peers to respect each other?
You really crafted a very nice question there. I can tell you worked on it and, uh, you wrote it well. Um, we've, we've been talking a lot about bullying tonight. It's a big issue. And, um, I think I'm going to refer back to some of our earlier responses and, um, perhaps you'll stay afterwards and we can have a conversation with the student member of the board and we can take it up further. Mr. Berliner has a question.
I think all of us here are so struck by how many of the questions are bullying. I don't know if you'd be willing, but I'd like to ask you if you'd consider raising your hand if you either have been bullied or seen somebody get bullied. I think that's so terribly important.
Could I, yeah. And to follow on that, very good question. Those of you, do you, you can raise your hand. Put your hands down now. And then for those of you, you know, if you look back over the years that you've been in school, do you think that the problem is worse today than, let's just pick a random number, three years ago?
Do you receive, um, do you receive guidance in school about how to respond to bullies? So, all right. Okay. Shh. Thank you.
This young lady, she has a, a solution that she'd like to share, a little idea that she has, so.
Oh, great. Let's hear it.
I have two things. Well, they do give us guidance, but like, it's not really effective and they say the same thing over and over again. They say, oh, go to the principal or go to your parents, but nobody really cares. So, an idea is that we could have more group projects, but like, not really graded because not everyone does work. And at school, and, uh, we have more group projects at school and after-school like EBV where different friend groups could interact with each other and kids who find other similarities or interests, um, tend to get along, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Nice job.
That's a good question. Well, while she's getting the next speaker, I have a quick question. How, do you get, do you get more than one or two days of training on teaching tolerance or learning tolerance or anti-bullying behavior? Do you get that kind of support in school?
Less than a class period?
A year?
Probably like a semester, like, what's a semester? Oh, hello. Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I said that we get like half a class period, probably a semester or quarter on, um, informing students of how to prevent bullying and how to speak up if you are being bullied.
If you've got an administration, what happens?
Have you tried ignoring or, you know, s- stuff that's completely outdated, that doesn't work in today's day and age? And they show us these videos that were made in 1990 that don't relate to stuff now.
That's so long ago.
Be careful here. Be careful.
It's all right.
I hope you understood what I meant. I did not mean to have that. Sorry.
1990, that's fresh.
Wow. They didn't have cell phones back then, I hear.
Uh, we're going to continue a little of this dialogue. Mr. Katz.
Can I ask one other question? How many of you have been in a school or in a school now that does like character counts programs or any other type of program for that? You have? Has that, has that helped at all from, no? Okay. Thanks.
I just, um, the only other thing that I would ask, I mean, you know, related to this 1990 reference, I think what I'm hearing is that the, the, what's being done, the training, you know, whatever interventions are completely outdated. They are not relevant. And in a time when social media and there's just so much happening, it is, I don't, I think there's a mismatch is what I'm hearing, right? So even things like character counts, maybe that worked back in the day when I was maybe, you know, but I don't think that is relevant anymore given everything that you guys are exposed to and given all the conflict that you're seeing out there. So, so this is really instructive because I think this will give us, at least through our education committee, an opportunity to talk to the school system, to really have a sense of, you know, how can you please bring the kind of A opportunities like was being described to have students with, you know, from different backgrounds come together and work collaboratively to really find lines of communication, but also what are some of the interventions and best practices that you can relate to, you know? Because I mean, I, I have a 21-year-old and a 26-year-old and I know that it is a very different time, you know, and you're exposed to a lot of things and there's just a lot of pressure. Really appreciate this kind of rich conversation with you guys. This is really awesome. Thank you.
And, and just one more thing very quickly that I just want to let every single student know and I want you to hear me. If you're being bullied in your school, if you know someone who's being bullied and you go to an administrator or you go to a teacher and they don't listen to you, I want you to remember these words that I'm telling you. I heard from Councilmember Rice that there's a bullying law that you're violating. Should I call him? I'll say it again. I understand that there's a bullying law that's being violated. Should I call him? And, and I mean this. We spent a lot of time working on that. That law was passed because a young person like you came to my office in Annapolis years ago crying and talking about the torment that she had in school. And we worked together to pass one of the strongest bullying bills in the nation. The law is there. It's on every single principal's bookshelf. I promise you. Make sure that they're held accountable and that they use it. You have the power and the voice and if they're not doing it, then you come to us and let me know.
All right, folks.
Hi, I'm Rose Gotchak. I'm a freshman at Sherwood High School and I just wanted to get your view on, I know that there's been a lot of civic engagement, um, among youth the past year especially. What are, what can you as the council do to support and improve safe civic engagement?
Right. We're trying hard tonight, Mr. Le- Listen, you know, uh, you have to participate. If you want this government thing to work, you've got to get involved. It, government's not going to solve your problems. Government's not going to figure out for you what the issues are in your community. You've got to get involved and you've got to raise your voice. And the problem in this country today is too many people are not taking that responsibility. And I hope that you are part of that change. And when young people get involved, the world changes, you know? You elected Barack Obama, uh, you changed the world and you could do it again. Roger.
Let me just, let me just share with you something that, that I observed as a member of the county council for the past 12 years and maybe Mr. Leventhal, 16 years. People are angrier than they've ever been before. It's in the air. Mr. Leventhal gave expression to the, the president's responsibility for it, but it has been building. People are angry. And if we don't address that and look at each other with kindness, we, we are simply not going to make it. So it is really fundamentally about being kind to one another and just knowing there is this energy out there that we have a choice as to whether we participate in that energy or create our own. So I just invite you and every one of you, take your own power to be kind and to spread that.
Thank you, Mr. Berliner.
Thank you.
We are going to have to wrap this up. We've had some incredible questions tonight. I think the council members were great. You guys were fabulous. Thank you so much.
All right, folks.
Give yourselves a hand. You were awesome. Really were. Really, really awesome. So I'm just going to, I'm going to let the council president say a, a few words and then we're going to wrap it up, but stick around. They'll be here to answer your questions if you didn't get a chance.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight to help us feel informed of your views and to have our, to be in, closer in touch with young people in this county. And thank you for the leadership that you're showing, the questions that you've asked tonight, the compassion that you have, uh, shown for your fellow students, your concern for everyone, uh, particularly this issue of bullying was very poignant, uh, very powerful discussion tonight. Uh, but we believe in you and we know that you are going to figure out solutions to the problems in this world today, but it's your participation in government that is going to get that job done. So you've got to follow through. I'd like to invite everyone who wants to to come up after this for a big group photo. We'll take one right here in front of the dais together and then, uh, we'll put it up on social media and you can tag yourselves. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks for joining. I'm Susan Kennedy for County Cable Montgomery. Thanks for watching tonight. tonight.